I'm going to go ahead and get started. Hello, for those of you I have not met, my name is Kalen Rizvold and I am the president and CEO of the Naperville Area Chamber of Commerce. And I wanted to say thank you so much for joining us here today. Thank you for giving us some of your time to really learn about the candidates and learn about our local elections. It's incredibly important to be informed as we get ready to cast our ballots. Here at the Naperville Area Chamber of Commerce, we aim to be your advocate and your resource for our community. And today is just one example of how we plan to do that. Huge thank you to Reba Osborne, who's our Director of Government Affairs and the entire Business Works Committee for working to put this on and making sure you can all have access to this information. They do want one important note, we are going to be recording this entire session. That way, if people weren't able to make it, they can still see the link and get this very valuable information from our website. And now, without further ado, I'm going to introduce our moderator. Our moderator today is Derek McDaniel. Derek is a financial advisor at Merrill Lynch, and he's also a chamber member. He's a member of our Business Works Committee and a member of our Board of Directors. He's incredibly involved in the community, and I thank you, I thank him for his time today. And I thank you all again for tuning in and really being interested in what's happening. So enough of me, I will toss it over to Derek, who will get us started with today's forum. Thank you, Derek.
Kalen, thank you very much for the opportunity. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Derek and I will be your moderator for today. The format of this event is as follows. Each candidate will be called on to give a one-minute introduction where he or she will provide information on why they're running, their qualifications for being on City Council, and their issue, key issues rather, in their platform. After each candidate has completed their introduction, we will ask each of them our first question. Again, each candidate will have one minute to respond. Once every candidate has responded, we will ask our second question with the same format. I will ask the candidates questions and raise my hand when the candidate has 10 seconds left, then an audible timer will go off when your time is complete. If you don't, I will put you in Zoom timeout. So let's not, let's try and avoid that. After each candidate has responded to both questions, we will open it up to two questions from our audience. This portion of the event will be moderated by Reba Osborne, the Director of Governmental Affairs here at Naperville Chamber. We will welcome, we welcome each of you to write questions in our chat at any point during the presentation. Please note, the candidates have not been given these questions ahead of time. If the time permits, we will ask the candidates one more question after our initial Q and A. So, let's dig in. Now, candidates will have one minute to introduce themselves, introduce their platforms, credentials for the position, et cetera. We'll begin with Councilman John Crummon. Mr. Crummon, you have one minute.
Thank you. So again, I'm John Crummon, I'm the guy with the red K. I'm a master's degree mechanical engineer, I also have an MBA. And I'm an adjunct professor of economics over at North Central College. Over my first two terms, I've been a member of the Public Utility Advisory Board, the Financial Advisory Board, and I championed the creation of the Sustainability Task Force. My issues are COVID, it seems like COVID, COVID, COVID. It's both physical, emotional, and economic, and I've done some things for that. It's public safety, it's sustainability, and it's finance. At my time on the Financial Advisory Board, I've been a strong advocate for reducing debt. We retired $60 million worth of debt on my watch, saving $4 million a year, and we've maintained a AAA bond rating. I'm endorsed by both the Daily Herald for the fifth time, and so I'm five out of five on that, and I have, I'm also endorsed by the firefighters. Again, my name is John Crummon, and I'm the guy with the red K. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Crummon. Next up, Ms. Jennifer Brzan Taylor. Ms. Taylor, would you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, thank you for having me here. My name's Jennifer Brzan Taylor, I'm running for Naperville City Council. Remember to pick six on April 6th. I'm running so that I promote small businesses, protect public safety, and pursue reasonable development. I grew up in Naperville, and I spent my career as a Cook County prosecutor, where every day made tough decisions in emotionally charged situations by analyzing facts, doing research, and speaking to people. Definitely what's necessary for city council today. Attend all the city council meetings over the past few years, and so I'm on top of the issues that Naperville's facing. Let's turn to those issues. Promoting small businesses. Every lost business has a ripple effect throughout the community. My plan to help involves private-public partnership with local area banks. Now protecting public safety is paramount to the well-being of our businesses, community, and our residents. Both the Fraternal Air Police and the Firemen's Union has endorsed me because they know I'll work with our police force to keep our community safe. Finally, pursuing reasonable development. This means balancing new growth and housing needs and resident concerns in a sustainable way. Thank you so much. Remember, pick six on April 6th.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Next up, Mr. Ian Holthausauer. Mr. Holthausauer, introduce yourself, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ian Holthausauer. I believe leadership is about giving people something to believe in that's bigger than themselves, and I want people to believe in Naperville. I was born and raised here, I'm the son of two immigrants. When I graduated from Naperville North, the 9/11 attacks occurred, and I knew I wanted to serve, so I became a uniformed attorney in the Air Force, serving seven years. When I came back to Naperville, got very involved in the community, serving on the Board of NCTV Channel 17, and currently serving as the chairman of the Board of this organization, the Naperville Chamber. As a city council member, my three guiding star priorities will be, number one, restoring respect in the community. I'll hold monthly town hall conversations and always hear the facts before making a decision. Second, protecting our economy, especially against the upward creep of use taxes. And finally, preserving our environment, especially transitioning us towards more renewable energy sources. I look forward to hearing your questions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holthausauer. Next up, Ms. Vasavi Chakka. Would you please introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. My name is Vasavi Chakka, I'm running for Naperville City Council. I'm number three on the ballot, and please do select that on April 6th or before. I have been a Naperville resident for past 16 years, and we came here, my husband and I, we moved here to give our kids the best possible opportunities for them to thrive. They both graduated from Nikua Valley High School. While they were in school, I get to meet with Mayor Peddle, and his story inspired me so much, and then suddenly I realized, because of his leadership, Naperville has been the number one town for year after year, and I wanted to be a leader like him, to care about all the people and bringing people together. Ever since I decided that, I joined, I mean, you know, I started serving the community, starting with PTA and other, other community organizations. So I wanted to make our Naperville a better place to live, continuing forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chakka. Next up, Mr. Paul Leong. Mr. Leong, would you please introduce yourself?
Well, I've heard of a New York minute, I'll try to do this in a Naperville minute. Hi, my name is Paul Leong, and I'm running for Naperville City Council. First, I would like to thank Naperville Area Chamber of Commerce for allowing me to join in this forum. I would also like to thank all of my opponents for stepping up to provide service and leadership. For the last four years, I've been serving Naperville School District 203, and I've been learning how to serve, how to govern, and how to lead. During that time, I have lowered property taxes by more than $30 million, and still maintained a high level of academic achievement. All of those tax cuts benefited residents as well as businesses. When I step down, I will leave a healthy surplus. My degrees are in finance and economics, and I've worked as a financial analyst and an IT professional for decades. I believe that good government needs to be efficient, effective, and provide financially responsible decision-making and leadership. I have been serving you for the last four years. Please allow me to continue to serve you by electing me, Paul Leong, to the office of Naperville City Council. Vulture Paul Leong, I am number one on the ballot. You can read more about me on my website, www.votleeong.com. Thank you.
Mr. Holthausauer, thank you very much. Next up, Mr. Jim Hazelhors. Mr. Hazelhors, please introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Jim Hazelhors. I'm your fourth choice on your ballot. I have over 30 years of government management experience. For the last 25 years, I've managed a local Naperville business, and as well as volunteering with various Naperville nonprofits and charities. For over 20 years, I've been following city government, city council meetings, board meetings, and interacting with council members and board members as well as city staff. So I'm very familiar with how our local government works. I have an MBA from the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign, and my reason for running is because I believe in giving back to the community. This community's provided a lot for me, and I feel, I feel it's only right that I should help give back to the community and help build the community and make the community better. You can learn more about me and all my qualifications on my website, naprevillecandidate.com. And again, I am the number four choice on your ballot. My name is Jim Hazelhors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hazelhors. Next up is Ms. Allison Longenbaugh. Ms. Longenbaugh, would you please introduce yourself?
Absolutely. Naperville Chamber, thanks for hosting on this snowy afternoon. My name is Allison Longenbaugh. My husband and I moved to Naperville 16 years ago to raise our family, and we have three daughters at Naperville North. I have a degree in math from Penn State. I've been with JP Morgan for 29 years, and that career has given me the experience and leadership that would be a benefit to council. I started going to city council meetings because of the Fifth Avenue train station development, which is in my neighborhood. I've attended almost 60 council meetings over the last three years, and I use my passion for running to research locations on the agenda and to explore all that our city has to offer. I want to move Naperville forward with policies and programs that will best serve our diverse residents and strong business community, and to position Naperville for a stronger future. I will help transition to post-COVID economy, advocate for a transparent development process that includes all stakeholders, and get back to the basics of providing city services. I will serve the best interest of all residents by making evidence-based decisions. I am running for Naperville. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Longenbaugh. Next up, Mr. Vincent Ori. Would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Vincent Ori, and I'm running for city council. I've lived in Naperville my entire life, and I've been involved in the community activities and the Historic Sites Commission. And the reason I'm running is because I feel that the community, local residents have not been included in the political situation. And my whole point is to get people more involved in the politics and running. We know that the local politics is not very high on most people's ballots. I would like to encourage it to be more useful to the public, and in so doing, rearrange or reconform the council meeting and planning and zoning commission meetings to include public comments early in the meetings rather than later in the meetings. So my whole purpose is to get more people involved in local politics. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ori. Next up, Mr. Mark Erdo. Would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, good afternoon. Hi, I'm Mark Erdo. I'm a 41-year resident of Naperville, a local businessman. My degree is Electrical Engineering from the University of Notre Dame, and for the last five years, I've been having the opportunity to serve Naperville through the Historic Preservation Commission. It's because of my experience with the Historic Preservation Commission that I feel that I am running for office. In particular, I'm running underneath a slogan that says, "Balance Through Leadership." The balance that I'm seeking is to make sure that all stakeholders and all issues are equally heard. We are facing many big decisions in the coming years, including dealing with COVID, attaining the affordable housing goal, working to expand our efforts in diversity, and enhancing transparency in government. So those are the issues I hope to have an opportunity to talk about more today, and I look forward to those discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erdo. Next up, Ms. Lucy Chang Evans. Ms. Evans, would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, I am Lucy Evans, and I'm running for Naperville City Council. Thanks for having me here. One thing that sticks in people's minds about me is the fact that I used to be a Secret Service agent, and I've been told that it's been, it's pretty distracting, so I like to get that out of the way before I tell everyone about the rest of me, which is, I am a licensed professional civil engineer. I have more than 12 years of experience in both the public and the private sector, and I'm a public servant. I have eight years of experience combined as a civil engineer and a law enforcement officer. I am running because I care deeply about my community, and I want my elected officials to represent people like me. I am a married mother of three, I am a former stay-at-home mom, and I'm a former single mom. I want to help build a sustainable Naperville through the triple bottom line, and that's people, planet, and prosperity. And so ironically, this is the short version, ironically, the way to sustain our way of life is to change our way of life. I hope everybody gets to know me more, and remember, I love Lucy.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Last but not least, to Councilman Benny White. Mr. White, you have one minute.
I am Councilman Dr. Benny White, and I'm running for reelection for the Naperville City Council because I want to continue moving Naperville forward together. Thanks to the Chamber for hosting today's forum. Just a little bit about myself, I've been married to my high school sweetheart, Kim, for 33 years, and we have two adult children. I graduated from West Point, the premier leadership institution in the world, and I've served 22 years in the United States Army. Since retiring, I've continued my leadership journey and received my Doctorate in Values-Driven Leadership. During my time on council, I've been a stalwart supporter of CDC guidelines, maintaining a steady tax base, and I've been a leader in diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives here in the community. My platform is community engagement, financial stability, public safety, attainable housing, and smart development. Leaders and organizations in our community have recognized my leadership potential as I've received endorsements from Congresswoman Lauren Underwood, Mayor Steve Cherkle, DuPage County Board Member Amy Chavez, the Daily Herald, the Naperville Professional Firefighters, as well as Naperville Area Chamber of Commerce. I am the last name on the ballot, and I please will take all your support and visit my website, please, at BennyWhite.org to learn more about me. Thank you all.
Councilman White, thank you very much. Okay, now it is time for our first question. Again, just as a reminder, each candidate will have one minute to respond. I will raise my hand when the candidate has 10 seconds left, then an audible timer will go off when your time is complete. I will ask each question one time. Feel free to write it down, and please let me know if you'd like for it to be repeated. First question, how do you define responsible development? We will begin this round with Mr. Mark Erdo. Mr. Erdo, would you like to begin, please?
It's an honor to begin with that question, since my campaign largely is based on development. For me, responsible development is development allows growth, but also allows the neighborhoods, the main neighborhood, what it is to remain largely as they are. It means that all stakeholders involved need to participate in the process. The current process has some roadblocks to the residents. Information about when projects are actually being worked on show up to the residents through PCC simply a week before they hit the agenda. This is too little time. We need more input, and that's why I'm running on council, so that we can make sure that the input from the residents is balanced against the residents, the issues of the private and special interest groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erdo. Next up, Councilman Dr. Benny White.
Thank you for the question. As I look at that, when I look at responsible development, it's understanding that we have residential and we have commercial, and we need to have a nice balance of that. If you look at the two areas of the community where the school districts are, you're going to see a balance where it's more favorable to live in the 203 area versus the 204 area because there's more commercial over there. So we need to ensure that we're having that type of balance, I think that is super important. I think listening to the residents as well and all the other stakeholders when you're doing a development becomes extremely important as well. And when we come up with our own master plan, that should be our guiding principle to help us do the things that we said we're going to do, and we don't deviate necessarily from it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman White. Next up, Ms. Lucy Evans. Would you like to answer the question?
Yes, I might nauseate everybody by the end of the day with my triple bottom line, but responsible development needs to incorporate the triple bottom line, that's people, planet, and prosperity. For the people, we need to make sure that all the stakeholders are involved in the process of any development. And for our planet, let's make sure there's green infrastructure built into the development to make sure that the people surrounding it aren't overdeveloped, they don't get extra flooding or extra pollution from this development. And prosperity, let's build sustainability into the model, like EV charging stations, smart city grid infrastructure. All of those things need to be taken into account to make sure that it's responsible development.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Mr. Vincent Ori, it is your turn.
Thank you. My responsible development, I don't believe has been open to the public. I believe there's a couple of issues that have prevented that. One of them is the lack of transparency, especially with the Naperville Development Partnership. And I would encourage restructuring the, as I said in my opening statement, the council meetings and get feedback from the residents early in that process. And like Mark just said, get the entire community involved instead of just selected people and selected developers. So I would ask for transparency and openness in the entire situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ori. Next up, Ms. Allison Longenbaugh. Would you like to answer the question, please?
I absolutely would. Balance has been a term that a lot of people have used here. I agree, this is all about balance. It's what brings all the stakeholders to the table. We need both combination of commercial to bring in tax revenues, but also fair to the residents, and it needs to be sustainable as well. We don't want growth to just go unfettered. My experience with Fifth Avenue is that all the stakeholders were there, but we really weren't listened to. I want to make sure that we all get to see the sausage being made. We want to, we want to have a seat at that table and be able to voice our concerns and to be heard, and that is very important. And what I bring to the table is the desire to make that progress towards that unification and compromise, progress to be able to achieve something versus being stuck with nothing. And we've kind of done that for years, and it worked somewhat okay, but it's not what we need right now. We need to move forward.
Thank you very much, Ms. Longenbaugh. Mr. Jim Hazelhors, you are up. Mr. Hazelhors, you there? Oh, you're on mute, sir.
Sorry, sorry about that. Thought I clicked it. Sorry, yes, I believe responsible development is balanced development, it balances the needs of the local neighborhoods as well as the needs of the community and the city as a whole. It needs to balance current land use needs as well as future land use needs, so it has to meet our current needs as well as our future needs. Simply building what meets our current situation creates a problem that then future generations or future citizens are going to have to deal with. So that's a big part of balanced and responsible development, future needs as well as current. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hazelhors. Next up, Mr. Paul Leong.
I think responsible development includes recognizing and acknowledging the needs of both the developers and other stakeholders such as residents. As a city council member, I would like to bring these groups together in advance of development so that those issues and concerns can be addressed in advance so that they work together in the spirit of cooperation and compromise. I think when you do that, you hope to achieve this idea of, you know, being a good neighbor. So as new development comes in, we'd like to act responsibly and become part of those neighborhoods and be a good neighbor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Vasavi Chakka, would you please answer the question?
Yes, sir. Responsible development is a balanced development, accommodating all the residents' needs, which includes senior citizens especially, because they have given us so much to this community, and also families with young children. And sensitive and harmonious to the communities, don't put, you know, the construction which don't put burden on schools, and don't interfere with quality of life or degrading the quality of life, and which also accommodates the traffic issues and transparency when the business or residential development comes to the City Council or Planning and Zoning Commission. And combination of methods we can use to make responsible development, which combines with, you know, planned unit development and no one actually occurring affordable housing methods. So that's what it means to me, responsible development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chakka. Next up, Ian Holthausauer. Mr. Holthausauer, would you please answer the question?
Sure. You know, when I was growing up in Naperville a few decades ago, this was known as the best place in America to raise a family, and it still is. And it's largely because for 50 years, we've gotten responsible development right. We stand on the shoulders of people that put a great deal of their life's work and effort into creating a comprehensive master plan, starting in the 1960s, and our community's done a wonderful job of sticking to that. We had the opportunity back then to take in massive developments that didn't have much land for parks or didn't have elementary schools, but we said, no, we have a Naperville brand to protect, and we were going to balance out the need for development with the needs of residents. Of course, we do need to stay flexible. A great example is one that Councilman White highlighted earlier, the fact that we now have a much higher tax burden in District 204 than 203 because of the lack of commercial development on that side of town. But I believe that with the right minds in the room, we can continue this great tradition and take the baton that's been passed to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holthausauer. Next up, Jennifer Brzan Taylor.
Thank you. Responsible development's one of my platform issues, and I break this down to three things. One, having an updated and comprehensive master plan, one that clearly lays out what type of development, what type of commercial, what type of residential is going where, so that we can help reduce a lot of this conflict that we're seeing over both new and infill development. This means also encouraging the use of sustainable and environmentally friendly building methods so that we're preserving our natural resources and not building something that is an eyesore 10 years from now. And it also means incentivizing our developers to help us solve our attainable housing needs. And there's multiple ways that, under each of these categories, we can accomplish these goals, and I hope that you'll check out my website and to learn more about the ways that I lay this out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Last but not least, to Councilman John Crummon.
Figured since I went first last time, I was going last this time. Responsible development is obviously sustainable, and in fact, we're talking about that tomorrow night at the City Council. Sustainable is not just green energy, it's also how we work our building codes. But I'm going to talk a little bit about a project and an insight into how I work. The Starbucks at Washington and Gardner was in great trouble of not coming through, and the residents were very much against it. After meeting with residents, after meeting with the developer, I finally learned that one of the residents, the strong voice against the development, just didn't want headlights in her picture window. So I worked with her, understood her concern, was able to move the traffic, just as mentioned, put up some landscaping in order to block the headlights, and now someone who was against the issue is now for the issue. I can talk about polo clubs, I can talk about little friends, I can talk about many instances where I sit down and I talk with residents and I talk with developers, and my job as a city councilman is to bring people together. Thank you.
Councilman Crummon, thank you very much. That completes our first round. I would like to remind our attendees to submit questions into the chat field as we go along. Now on to our second question. Again, I will ask the question one time. Feel free to write it down, please let me know if you'd like for it to be repeated. Second question, speak to one policy that you plan to introduce or support that will have the greatest impact on the business community in Naperville. We'll begin with Ms. Allison Longenbaugh.
What was the end of that one? I was just writing it down, that you plan to introduce or support that will...
Yes, ma'am. Speak to one policy that you plan to introduce or support that will have the greatest impact on the business community in Naperville.
Okay. Well, first off, I mean, one of the best things that we can do right now to help the business community is to wear our masks. We need to make sure that we are getting through COVID, so that's one of the things we need to do. Second is that I am not a small business owner. I've been in the corporate world for 29 years, but I'm not going to pretend to know what the business, the businesses in Naperville are going through right now. So I'm going to rely on experts like you.
I'd like to say really closing, please.
Sorry, what was that? No, sorry.
Friday at 9:00, I believe, Sam.
I'll keep going. I'm going to rely on experts like you and the Naperville Development Program and the Downtown Alliance to advocate for businesses and to let council know what resources would be best to help them. But right now, we need to get through COVID, and so that would be my number one priority. One thing I would like to do is to perhaps try closing down the downtown to traffic, to car traffic this summer, to see if that will bring more foot traffic into our restaurants and shops. I think that would be a great thing to try, and to see if it works.
Thank you, Ms. Longenbaugh. Next up, Mr. Ori. Mr. Ori, I believe you may be on mute.
Sorry. Yes. There are many small business opportunities, and I think we have to use some imagination. There are many small business opportunities, and I think we have to use some imagination. There's a lot of facilities that are going out of business. And I would suggest that we start using some of those facilities and also include things like small restaurants in the neighborhoods rather than just on the outskirts of town. The number of restaurants are all located in one area. And we have a very high traffic pattern for the bars and restaurants in the downtown area. We do not have any family type restaurant or very many family time restaurants in the community. And I would suggest that we start encouraging that type of business opportunity for the people coming into Naperville.
Thank you, Mr. Rory. Next up, Mr. Jim Hazelhorse.
Thank you. Actually, our city has many very good policies to help business communities. The current policies that they have in place to help communities deal or business, small businesses and businesses in our community deal with COVID are excellent examples of that. I would definitely support continuing those programs until clearly we are well out of the, out of danger in our economy and the local economy as it covered. Another example, excellent example is the outreach programs that have brought businesses like the Patel Brothers and of course Mall of India to our community. We definitely need to continue those policies. Clearly bringing that business, that diversity into our business community strengthens our business community and reaches more of our, the needs of our community. So I would definitely continue to support those policies as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Ms. Lucy Chang Evans. Ms. Evans?
Thank you. I want to give a shout out to John Crummon for being the champion of sustainability for Naperville. And I'm going to harp on it again, sustainability. We need to create an environment that is conducive to business. Some of the best engineering is the stuff that you don't notice. If you don't notice it, it's good engineering. We've got good roads. We have to make sure that there's leaf collection, you know, road, snow removal, everything that a business can operate in. And so tomorrow night, Sustainability, the NEST, is going to present their sustainability report. And I would love to support every effort that they put forth.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Mr. Paul Leong?
Thank you. I'd like to answer this in two parts. So first and foremost, I'm all about financial responsibility, spending taxpayer money wisely. And as we make government efficient and effective, we can do more for businesses and for residents. And the second idea I'd like to bring forward is in support of Mr. Hazelhorse and the idea that if we could extend some of our supports to minority businesses and more diverse businesses, again, we strengthen the entire business community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dr. Benny White, Mr. White?
Sure, thanks for the question. I think one of the first things that we can do is ensure that we have strengthened our infrastructure, our roads. And that we've dedicated $12 million to this last budget that we just approved to improving road networks. That affects our businesses for sure. Home rule sales tax, we've raised that up a couple of times. That is something I think we need to lock in so we're not continuing to lean on that in burdening our businesses with that as well. And then I would finally say, as, you know, it's to look at opportunities where we can do some in-house training. I know the Chamber does a great job of this, of getting businesses that are well established, establishing more like a mentor protege program. So when we have smaller businesses coming in and you want them to stay afloat and then to progress and so forth, they've got other people that they can look at to, for help. And having forums, leadership forums and doing those types of things, I think only strengthen our ability to survive for our smaller businesses that come in, mentor ones. Thank you.
Councilman White, thank you very much. Mr. Ian Holsauer. Ian, I believe you may be on mute.
Sorry about that. In 2015, Naperville did not have what's known as a home rule sales tax, which means we didn't add a city surcharge onto the state sales tax for the purchase of goods. That tax was introduced with the promise that it would sunset within two years. Not only was that promise broken, but the tax actually increased again. And another promise was that that tax would be used to pay down long-term debt. And that did not happen, I mean, this year for the first time, those funds are being used to pay general operating expenses. This is a tax which has a disproportionate impact on our small business community. It's why the Chamber opposed it in the first place. And I think we need to bring this issue to light. We have about probably $15 million of federal stimulus money coming to the city soon. I think we need to go back, use that to pay down our debt and start relooking at home rule sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holsauer. Ms. Jennifer Brizan Taylor, Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. So again, this is another one of my platform issues. Without a strong business community, we can't do all the other great things that we want to do. So I've been working with stakeholders, small business owners since the fall, early fall about what do they want? What do they need? There's some small investment ideas they want, like reevaluating some of our landscaping and signs requirements so their businesses have better visibility. There's higher investment ideas, such as a private-public partnership that I proposed with local area banks, where we as the city or the banks provide the loan and service loan, but the city helps by providing grant money to help with those first few business, the payments, help them through the struggling time. Another idea that is to look at our procurement code. We should be first focusing on buying local before we're going outside of Naperville. And this is something we have the NDP to look to as a model. And it's also more sustainable than going beyond, going outside of Naperville. So these are some great ideas that I want to go forth with if elected to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Next up, Mr. Mark Erda, Mr. Erda?
Thank you. Very interesting question. In a recent interview, Mayor Jericho pointed out that the ability of the marijuana dispensaries that have come to the city of Naperville have generated over $2 million in revenue. And this happened in less than one quarter. Now, if we don't even expand that, we'll have $8 million. I would like to see us repurpose some of that money into programs that encourage minority businesses to open up in Naperville. I think this does two things for us. One, it helps us build on the diversity efforts championed by Councilman White. But also, more people mean more business, okay? And equity is a good thing for all. So I would say, let's take this revenue bonanza and spread it around the community, help minority communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erda. Next up, Ms. Vasilevichaka. Ms. Chaka, I believe you may be on mute.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, yes. I have three priorities, fostering trust and public safety, promoting smart economic development and investing in our infrastructure. Saying that, any, any policies which make these three priorities happen, I would support those policies. And most importantly, we need the transparency. I would support any policies which will manage taxpayers' dollars responsibly and with transparency. So one of the ideas I have is we have, we can, we have a lot of untapped potential in Naperville. For example, we produce excellent students from all the, all the high schools and colleges. We have the student graduate from that. So I would like to see a Silicon Valley of Midwest built in Naperville. So I would like to bring all the stakeholders, like the subject matter expertise, the students, and also the venture capitalists to the city to make this vision reality. So.
Thank you, Ms. Chaka. Next up, Councilman John Crummon, Mr. Crummon?
Thank you. So as a candidate, our job is to talk. But as an elected official, our job is to listen. So I met with some downtown businesses about the streetscapes that were, and we met around Christmas time. And, and long story short, what I also heard in those conversations was, we're struggling and we're struggling for cash flow. And so as chairman of the Public Utility Advisory Board, as a member of the Financial Advisory Board, I know that the utilities have solid cash reserves. And it got me to thinking, how can we reduce their utility payments? And so within a month's time, I worked with staff and got counsel to pass on a 9-0 vote, you know, utility relief payments for our program for, for the local businesses and unemployed residents. And that is $1,500 for businesses and $300 for residents. So as everyone talks about what they will do, I am talking about what I've done. And again, it's about listening and bringing people together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Crummon. That completes our second round of questions. We will now open it up to chat questions submitted by our attendees. I would like to introduce Reva Osborn, Director of our Governmental Affairs for the Naperville Chamber of Commerce. Reva, are you available and can you hop on?
I think I am. So if I start selling like a robot, just jump in and cut me off and I'm having some intermittent internet issues. So we will start with some of the questions in the chat. First of all, I must, I think we need to, I guess, open this up to all candidates. With potential permanent changes in how and where we work post-COVID, what are the candidate's vision for how the city can help transition workers and businesses to the new normal? So Derek, do I want to...
Why don't we begin with Councilman Benny White? Mr. White, would you like to begin?
You know, this is, it's a great question. As bad as we know COVID to be, there's been a lot of lessons learned that have come from it as well. The fact that we are conducting this forum right now on a Zoom call is one of those. I, as a teacher, I've been able to adjust myself because we're doing a lot of things over Zoom. So I think it's going to be very important that we take those lessons learned and reassess kind of how we do business in the future. Yeah, I can easily see where people will probably not have to go into work five days a week. Maybe they go in three days a week. A lot of folks have been working from home like, like myself. I'm back in the schools because we just opened back up. So those are the types of things I think that we, we're going to be able to explore and do, look at all the other different lessons learned, not just the Zoom. That was just one example, but there's other things that we've been able to adjust to. And part of that will be the new norm. But at the same time, I think we'll be able to return to some of the other ways of how we've done things in the past. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman White. Next up, Councilman, Mr. John Crummon, would you like to answer the question?
So I was at a forum, you know, many months ago, many years ago. And they said, it was a, we need to start building less asphalt and more fiber. And the city now currently has all our fire, all our fire stations and all our police stations are connected by fiber. And, and it sounds scary when you say the term dark fiber, but all that means is fiber that's light, that's lit up and transferring data and fiber that's not. And so we have a lot of dark fiber in the, in the, in the community. And how do we harness that? Because connectivity is now more important than ever, as we all now see. So what does COVID mean moving forward? Nobody knows, nobody's sure, but one thing's for sure, we need more internet capacity. And one of those things could be provided by the city through our interconnectivity through fiber optics. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Crummon. Reva, would you like to ask another question submitted by...
I think Paul has his hand up.
Okay, Paul, Mr. Leong, would you like to answer the question?
Yes, please. If you go to the Naperville website, there are pages and pages of accolades and awards. The newest one that I really enjoy is best place from which to work from home. And this really hearkens to the future. I would love to attract high-tech workers and, and good-paying jobs from, from all over the country to come to Naperville to enjoy our, our world-class schools, our safe environment, our great parks and libraries and so on. And as those people come here to work from home, it creates business opportunities and so on. So I love this direction and I hope we can really jump on it to, to take advantage of it and get it out there into the, to the national spotlight. Because I think it'll really attract a lot of great new residents here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Leong. Reva?
Anyone else want to respond to that before we move on to the next question? Oh, I got lots of other hand raises, okay. Jennifer?
Thank you. So I want to add on to what Councilman Crummon said because that's something I've been advocating from the very beginning is about expanding our fiber optics here because it is already connected through our, a lot of our public works buildings and our public buildings here. But if you look at, we have miles and miles of it already built underground. And if we expand beyond that, we can attract more tech companies here to those lines where they're at. Because already businesses prefer to go there as it is. So we can make this, attract more tech companies to Naperville that way. In addition, surprisingly, our office space is actually doing great now here in Naperville. So what companies are finding is that they're losing their company culture over Zoom. So what they're looking to do is, oh, have a hybrid system. A hybrid system that has both an office somewhere, but also they have satellite offices. And they're looking at Naperville for their satellite offices. So our, our office space is doing phenomenal actually. And it's thought to be even better once COVID ends here in Naperville. So, you know, we need to just continue on with both expanding our fiber optic. We get more tech companies here and also, I guess I keep us attractive here for these satellite office, offices. Thank you.
I think Lucy, you had your hand up as well, correct?
Thank you. I keep accidentally hitting the, almost hitting the stop video instead of the unmute button. So one of the concerns, I, I love what John and Jennifer have had to say, but I also wanted to build on, there has been a fear about what's going to happen to the office space in Naperville. And I hope that we realize that there are, there's always going to be innovation whenever there is a need. So I think that people are innovating. A lot of people are transitioning from work to work from home, but they still need office space. So the WeWork model for hoteling in this office space will work quite nicely. I think it'll still be utilized. And also, we got to think about daycares. We might want to start looking at different changes to zoning so we do allow daycares in these offices. Jennifer's got young kids. My kids are, thank goodness, older, but daycare is a really big, childcare is a very big problem in Naperville. And we can even address that through, through this.
That's some, oh, lots of hands. Okay, so Mark?
Thank you. The one acronym that has not been said, but I will build on the fiber conversation, the rapid adoption of 5G technology. Lucy's very fond of pointing out in the future that, you know, self-driving cars are coming and they're one part of the solution. I would like to see an initiative that brings fiber to every home in Naperville. And what this does is enhance the ability to work from home. And this has a benefit for the city of Naperville restaurants because more people working at home mean more people buying locally and working here. The second benefit is the one that is less traffic. We know that COVID has made us totally rethink what we have to think about, how Fifth Avenue is going to work. Obviously, the need for large parking structures needs to be readdressed depending on what those commuter patterns are. So I'm a big fan of fiber too. As an electrical engineer, I have been installing it for the last 20 years. Thank you.
Ian, I think you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to point out that one lesson, which I want to make sure we don't lose sight of after the pandemic, is that the city itself can save a lot of tax dollars from the lessons we've learned. For example, we were able to be about a million dollars under budget for city operations over the past year just from things like having employees working from home, having lower city utility bills as a result of that. So let's not forget all those lessons when we, you know, quote unquote, return to normal after, after the pandemic. Second, with regard to commercial real estate, there has been an acceleration of the problems that brick and mortar retail businesses were facing before the pandemic as people are even more comfortable shopping online now. We're going to have to look at creatively repurposing our spaces on Ogden Avenue and Route 59. A great example is the micro apartments that just came up on Ogden or Mall of India on 59. I'm confident with the right leadership, we can do it.
That's some great, Vasilevich?
Yes. We are all talking about working from home and the remote working, new normal and all that. I have done this 16 years ago. When I came here from Houston, I was working on a project work from home. So we were researching what are the best optimal methods to use that and also keep the eye on the performance of the employees. So I have done that and we, we made a big, like, you know, big progress in that area. And also sharing workplaces. Before COVID happened, my daughter has a startup which used to help these companies where they can come and work from... work from shared places. And these are very boutique type of places. Naperville has so much potential in those areas. And not only that, we have to, as some of the, my colleagues have said here, 5G technology, that is the future. So technology is the future and we have to make technology more user-friendly in Naperville area and also make the processes easy for the consumers to use it. You know, this is the online shopping age and doing everything virtually. So that is the way to go. Thank you.
Okay, Allison?
Well, I think that our, our post-COVID normal is going to look a lot different than the pre-COVID normal. But that's okay. We need to embrace the change and we look for opportunities. I'm the perfect example of a loop-based business changing their patterns. I'm not even allowed in the building at Chase Tower. We might need more office space out here. Or just the services that the city and the park district provide, maybe an expanded walkable downtown. I think there's going to be an increased focus on being outdoors and wanting more opportunities to be active. So for example, we postponed the street, the streetscape improvements. What if we did a trial run of closing the downtown to car traffic and it was extremely successful? So maybe we have an opportunity to change those plans when we do the construction in the future. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, so, oh, yes, Jim?
Thank you. I would support what a lot of the candidates have said about it's the available space, loss of available space by companies not being probably as severe as we think it will be. I was just reading an article the other day in the Wall Street Journal where they were talking about, most companies aren't looking at this as an opportunity to move their people out of their offices as it is a way to enhance their business model by including Zoom meetings in. And as, as Mr. White said, hybrid models, you know, that kind of thing. As far as the statewide, the citywide fiber net, fiber optics, not all fiber optics are created equal. It's important that we do install a fiber optic that has the high bandwidth capacity needed to support what we're talking about here. So, and that's not necessarily going to be cheap. So we've got to, we've got to be financially responsible there when we talk about this. We definitely want to support our businesses with this kind of technology. But we need to make sure that we can finance it in a way that doesn't create too much debt for the city as well and that it's financially responsible to do so. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. So I know a couple of our candidates will be having to leave us a few minutes after five. So Derek, there's one question that we wanted to ask. Do you want to move forward with that question real quickly and see how much time we have with that?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Reba. In light of the pandemic and its after effects, how do you believe the city should proceed with the proposed Fifth Avenue development project? One minute each. We will begin with Councilman Dr. Benny White. Mr. White?
It's a great, that's a very good question. Right now with Fifth Avenue, in my opinion, it should, I mean, we, it's been delayed. Okay, and it just really needs to be reassessed. After COVID has happened, we, we understand that the, the new norm, the normal is now going to be a new normal. And we've got to do some analysis and assessments on there. I can tell you when we initially looked at it, I was, I was a little bit skeptical about the parking in the, in the numbers that we were coming up with, just simply because I could tell that the driving habits were changing. And I wasn't sure if the demand would be there. And I wanted that parking to be flexible. So if we could repurpose that land, we could do it. Now that we have had COVID, we recognize that the man for parking is not where it was. Right? People just aren't driving as much as they were. So that's just one example of just reassessing what, what we're looking at over at Fifth Avenue. But I think we do need some, some small commercials, some, some grocery stuff over there, residential, and some nice combination of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. White. Next up, Councilman John Crummon.
Thank you. And so what I do for a day job is I'm a product development engineer. And basically what that means is I'm bent to. And we have a couple of processes that we use called state, one's called stage gate, where you listen to your, you listen and you have gates you have to go through in order to move to the next, the next stage in the process. And I brought that to Naperville. I brought that to the Fifth Avenue project. And every two months, the residents and the developers stood before council and said, hey, we're good. Long story short, it didn't come out the way we wanted. And I eventually voted against the Fifth Avenue project moving forward. But there's also a process there called Voice of the Customer, again, where you listen and you try to hear what they're telling you and what does that mean? Moving forward, what does it, what is normal? We don't know, but we're going to have to sit down. We're going to go through this again in a stage gate, step-by-step process, and a voice of listening to the residents, listening to the commuters, listening to all stakeholders, so that we can understand what does it mean, what does Fifth Avenue look post-COVID, as opposed to what it looked pre-COVID? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Crummon. Mr. Ian Olzauer, would you like to answer the question?
Absolutely. I think this was actually a great opportunity for us to take a look at the parking needs of the city, look at the survey that the city did, where they talked to commuters and see, okay, what is actually likely to be needed in a post-COVID world? One of the great things about the potential to downsize the amount of commuter parking that we're building is it's going to cost some great cost reductions. You know, those spaces are like $27,000 a space or something like that to pour the concrete. Freeing up some of those dollars helps us out fiscally, but it also frees up space for potentially tax generating revenue, revenue generating uses, like maybe a small neighborhood grocery store that otherwise wouldn't have fit there before, a fitness center, a few extra condos. I think we're going to have a lot more opportunities. They're exciting for the chamber, for the downtown community. And I can't wait to see what we will be able to come up with in the next couple of years.
Hey, Mr. Olzauer. Paul Leong, would you like to answer the question?
Yes. I'm really thrilled that we have a current leadership that is flexible enough to rethink and reevaluate as, as the situation changes. And I'd like to add myself to that type of leadership. The situation has changed. I think it needs to be rethought, perhaps redesigned and reconsidered. That is, that is the type of leadership that I offer. And I think as the, as the post-pandemic situation evolves, you know, the parking situation is going to change, the commuting situation is going to change. And I would definitely look for other opportunities to have a better fit for what will be the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Ms. Lucy Evans?
Thanks. Yeah, I think the timing of the tabling of this project has been actually a blessing in disguise. I really love what Ian and John had to say. We just hired a diversity, equity and inclusion manager. We are about to hire a sustainability coordinator. And we just, our current city council made the decision to move forward with an inclusionary zoning ordinance. I think those need to be included in this project. This project is way too important to leave those out. So I think the timing is great. And I hope those, those three elements are built in. And I love that, you know, it's back to the drawing board is what I'm saying. And I think there's potential to build a lot more into it than there was before. And even since the inception, technology's even moved forward. So I'm excited to see what, what other plan can be presented to us.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Jennifer Bresant Taylor, would you like to answer the question?
Yes, this project was near and dear to my heart in that I was actively involved with multiple people, including Allison here, to get the proposed project rejected. And I definitely believe something needs to be developed here. We need something that works for the commuters, for the residents and the city as a whole, which the last proposal did not. Moving forward though, we have now a great opportunity within this post-COVID world. One thing that, a couple of things, we need to make sure that, I'm sure there will be a building, parking garage built there, at least one, to help deal with commuter parking. We need to make sure that this garage can be repurposed for another way in the future. And we don't need as many parking spots. Also, great opportunity while the ground's dug up to add the canisters for fiber optics over here for both our residents and attract tech companies. In addition, play up the connection to the DuPage Children's Museum, have some child-centered businesses, especially right over there in the land by the museum. So we have some, you know, great opportunities we can do here. It's something that works for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Mr. Mark Erda?
Thank you very much. Much of that has been said I agree with. I do also fundamentally agree that this was actually a godsend, that COVID came along and this project has been put on hold, so it can be reevaluated. The one thing that I think that's very, very important for us in Fifth Avenue, unlike many other projects in the city, this is actually land that Naperville owns. Okay? And this is an opportunity for us, no matter what the final plan is, to, to advance our goal of affordable housing. It is a shame that in Naperville, that we have not been able to provide housing for our first responders, for our teachers and many of our seniors. And I hope what other plan that comes forward at Fifth Avenue incorporates affordable housing for these important residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erda. Reba, we have a number of great questions in our group chat. Would you like to ask our candidates one more question?
Allison did not have a chance to answer. I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. Now, we can continue through the list then. Allison, would you like to answer the question?
I would love to, because Fifth Avenue is the reason why I'm running for council. And I am so happy that we are not building a parking deck right now. We're going to need to reanalyze this entire thing. And ideally, it should be like a destination center that fits in with the neighborhood and it addresses the infrastructure constraints as well. I can see it having a mix of housing, so perhaps townhomes and workforce or senior housing as well. It's an example of an opportunity coming out of COVID, as it's given us a pause to get it right. And I'm sure the city learned the importance of involving and collaborating with residents. And I look forward to a more transparent, inclusive process and getting the inputs of partners like the Chamber and NDP as well. So thanks for letting me answer.
Thank you very much for the song, Bob. We will go to Mr. Jim Hazelhurst. Would you like to answer the question?
I'll keep it short. I agree with a lot of what's been said. Clearly, things have changed in our community and we need to reevaluate. Some of our needs have changed, space, parking, affordable housing. So we do need to reevaluate and make adjustments to the plans so that it fits our current needs rather than our past. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazelhurst. Vasili Chaka?
Yes, this is a great opportunity to reevaluate the Fifth Avenue project. And it has great potential to be a planned unit development, which meets all the needs. And taking the parking under consideration and following caution, this can be a boon for our Naperville community if it is built with responsible planning. Thank you.
Mr. Vincent Ori, would you like to answer the question?
Yes. Being a retiree, I do not hear anybody mentioning that part of the diversity and low-income housing includes many retirees that are now part of the city of Naperville. And it's a growing number of people. So I would like to be for Fifth Avenue Station, as well as the rest of the community, be someone who champions maybe lowering taxes for retirees and other people. And it's development and more of a community basis for nursing homes and things like that in the area that would be very beneficial to the entire community. So yes, I would much like to see something other than high-density buildings in that area.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ori. Reba, I believe we have time for one more question. We apologize if we can't get to your question this afternoon. Reba, would you like to pick another question from the Zoom chat?
Yes, this is a question. Can you address the concerns over the Illinois Municipal Electric Agency, IMEA, and its coal-burning generation plant in Southern Illinois? And how the city can move away from that long-term contract and diversify the resources of electric to ensure stability and affordability of electricity for the residents and businesses here in Naperville? So with the time left, just to make sure that we give everyone an opportunity that can speak, do you want to just go? Well, you'll be to just raise your hand and then I'll, I'll start with, let me just go through the list. And then if you don't, if you don't want to respond, just, well, I'll move on to the next person. Let's start with John Crummon.
So there is no way I can answer this question in a minute. It is very complicated. It is very confusing. It is both technical and it is both financial. And that's why I think I'm drawn to it. I have ten, this decision was made well before my involvement. And it's both, like I said, technical and financial. And I think that's why I'm drawn to it. In short, the answer is more distributive energy. And what does that generation and what does that mean? That means more rooftop solar and that means more community solar. And I'm happy to report, based on some of my efforts working with the Public Utility Advisory Board and the Sustainability Advisory Board, we've increased solar projects in Naperville to over 200 plus, I'm sorry, plus 200 plus percent over the last year. So by working with, with other sustainability leaders, we've increased solar distributive energy 200 plus percent in Naperville. And that's what we need to move forward. This is a long, long conversation. And I wish I could go in more detail, but I can't with the time provided. Thank you.
Okay, how about Jennifer Bresant Taylor? Do you have a response?
Yes, no, I mean, I'm one of those people that I'm very disappointed that we ever entered into this contract, especially since Illinois coal is some of the dirtiest coal. And only 17% of our energy comes from renewable sources at this time. I've had extensive directions with many stakeholders. Our director of electric utility. And the thing is, we're under contract to 2035. We can't even review it till seven, eight years from now. And everyone is, it comes in with all these great ideas. They think it's going to get able to get broken and there's all these pipe dreams. But in reality, we cannot break the contract. We have tried. We cannot break it. What we can do though is we are the largest purchaser. And so we can encourage them to, because we're the largest purchaser, to go to renewable sources, which they have agreed to do over the next five years, to have 40% be renewable energy. One thing we can do also support is our, right now, there is a solar project that we have been working with IMEA, where we donate the land, but IMEA spent millions of dollars on this solar project at Springbrook to have, have over 145 homes through solar energy. We also could expand our own sustainability through not only having our minutes of building, but all our public buildings use solar energy. So I don't know if I've reached time yet. Sorry.
Thank you. Let's see, we just have about probably five minutes remaining. So let's, other people that want to make a comment, raise your hand, Ian?
Oops, mute. Sure, well, I'll say, yeah, we have a contract, but there's two parties to a contract. So if you go to McDonald's and you order a Big Mac and they give you a $30 bill for that Big Mac, they've breached their contract. IMEA came in at $500 million over their projected cost for the power plant that's at issue here. So to say it's some kind of pipe dream to call that out, I think is not completely accurate. Second, that's not the only source of coal energy that we're talking about in Illinois. We have, or in Naperville, we have contracts for power with a facility in Trimble County, Kentucky, which end in 2021 and 2026. That accounts for 25% of our coal energy. And we absolutely, I think it's within the realm of possibility to use our leverage as the largest buyer with an IMEA by a huge margin to at least have us move away from that, which I think is a big step in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll just, just, just for order, go down the list. Vasili, do you have anything to respond to that?
Yes. I'm glad our current federal government is putting restrictions on environmental friendly policies. I mean, encouraging environmental policies. So this is a legal obligation we are in right now with the current contract. So there are different phases when some of the contracts are being expired and then we can renegotiate for them to use the green energy, for example, solar and wind power and then hydraulic energy. But we, we need to look into the cost-effective options as well. If we can make the solar energy into more cost-effective and more reliable one, I would really encourage that in our communities. Thank you.
Perfect. Paul?
I think he hopped off.
Oh, Paul had to leave. Okay, Jim, Hazelhurst?
Hi, guys. I have to leave too. Thank you. Thank you for, thank you so much for giving this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Vasavi, for being with us.
Thank you. Well, I hope what a lot of people learned by what happened in Texas is that we do not have a national grid. We have regional grids, and our regional grid in our area, 51% of the power comes from nuclear, which is owned by Exelon, and only distributes it through ComEd. They also own the 20, roughly 20% of gas-generated power in our country, in our, in our local grid. That leaves 11% that comes from renewable, and the rest is coal. So when you start talking about trying to find alternate contracts to purchase power, there's just not much to go but coal. That's the reason we ended up with coal, is because Exelon's tied up the nuclear and the gas, and there's only 11% renewable. So we have to be realistic with our demands, and IMEA has worked hard at building renewable sources and helping finance that. But a lot of the renewable that's out there is also owned by locals like ComEd, IMEA, and Amherd. They own a lot of that renewable. So again, it's not up for open contract. One thing Naperville can do is improve its electronic, it's a distribution power grid to include the microgrids, which would allow locally-generated, regionally-generated power, surplus power from houses to be pumped into the grid, so that we can share that, what Mr. Crummon was talking about. Pump it into our grid, in our local grids and microgrids, so we can share it and reduce some of our load that way. Thank you.
Benny, did you have something to say?
Yeah, just quickly, the big thing for us, a lot of folks have said it, and it was some good conversation, but we do have, because we are the largest consumer, we, you know, we have some pull there, and I just think we need to utilize that. Fight for a seat on that board, as an example, so that we have more say-so as far as what's happening, so that we can talk to them as far as getting more renewable-type resources, resources in there, or power sources that they can come from. Thank you.
Perfect. Allison?
Yeah, I mean, most people agree that our contract with IMEA is just not good for the environment, and they recognize the hurdles and the costs to move to renewable energy sources. But that shouldn't stop Naperville from using our power to mandate that IMEA make the move to renewable now. And once council sets that goal, then staff can look into the options for how to make it work. For example, there are pieces that, when they roll off, we should replace with renewable energy, like solar and wind as they reach maturity. We're already paying for our reliance on carbon energy, and our community has not been immune to addressed weather, and flooding, and polar vortexes, which have brought more costs to homeowners and businesses. It's costing us to continue as-is. Thanks.
Awesome. So, so let's see, Vince, have you?
Yes. You know, we are the customer, and any businessperson knows that, once you had, once you are a customer, you have a lot of power over the person that is supplying you with the goods. So if we concentrate our efforts on changing that and putting pressure on the distributor, it will happen, but we have to, have to make sure that it's known that, as a customer, you're not supplying us the way you originally contracted for. So, you know, just on any business situations, it's one of those situations where, if you want to keep the customer, you better make them happy. So we have a lot of power. Let's use it. Okay?
Awesome. So, let's see. Ah, who did I miss? So, so Mark, have you responded? Let's see. Oh, Lucy. Lucy, and we'll go Lucy and then Mark.
Thank you. One thing, I love this whole conversation. Everybody's brought up the points that we all need to talk about, but one thing that I also wanted to mention is, we, as a city, really can reduce our energy consumption. There, there are so many things that we need to do. Once again, I'm really excited for this sustainability coordinator that's going to be hired. I really want the city to take into account all of our energy consumption. There are so many things that we can do to make our operations more efficient and to reduce our actual energy consumption. And that's, that's one thing that we need to look at, where, you know, we're looking at landfills, but we need to just look at, stop, you know, not making as much trash, and that's how I see this question of energy.
Awesome. Thank you, Mark. And then I think that will be, Mark, you'll finish this off here.
Oh, thank you very much. A few years ago, we started a program called Energy Patriot, and it had three components. And this kind of piggybacks right off what Lucy says. The first component, conservation. There is tremendous opportunity for savings throughout, throughout the system. Two, optimization, okay? Making things work to the best. Things like smart grid, 5G, these are all important things. And the last speaks to the issue of generation. Generation, the alternate sources we talked about. I like microgrids. I like solar. I hate our IEM contract. It says we have to buy all our electricity from them. It says we can only have 2% of our energy from renewable sources. So for me, while there are technical and financial issues here, the legal issues are the ones. We need to talk to the lawyers, and we need to lobby our legislators and support the efforts of IEC and adopt the initiatives presented in the PRI plan, which will allow us to retire that plant by 2030. That would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Awesome. So I know there's so many great questions in the chat, and then there's, your responses are very wonderful, but we're just out of respect for time. I'm going to flip it back to Derek.
Thank you, Reba. Caitlin, thank you very much. So our time has come to an end, and that will conclude our candidate forum for this evening. While we weren't able to address everyone's questions, we will pass unanswered questions along to the respective candidates to address. On behalf of the Naperville Chamber of Commerce and our Business Works Committee, again, we aim to be your advocate and your resource for our community. Thank you to each of the candidates who shared their time today with us and being a community resource. As a reminder, a recording of this event will be posted on the Chamber's website. Remember to vote in the April 6 election. A mail-in and early voting is currently available. Please visit the DuPage County website and the City of Naperville website for more specific information on all voting options available. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So much for your, thank you so much.